And one for the clerk's office. Those are both personnel, but the clerk's office issue also is a contractual matter.
Please the motion we want to raise at the beginning of the meeting for those two.
Second it.
For discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. It was carried. Need to amend the agenda.
I had three things, Mr. Chairman, things that came since we published the agenda. First, we have a highway access right-of-way permit, which you could deal with as a non-controversial item if you chose to add it to the agenda. Another is a request from the clerk's office to waive penalties for late licensure of dogs, since today was the extended July 15th deadline. And finally, we need to set a date for a dog hearing.
Make motion, approve it as amended.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion is carried. Next are the meetings of July 1st, 2020. Are any changes, additions, or corrections to those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I will have to amend the first page simply to add the amount of payroll in the financial orders that were approved. That was omitted from these minutes, and Kelly has pointed that out. It's our usual practice to do it, and the auditors like to see it in the minutes apparently.
Do we still sign any orders?
Yep.
They told me that they cross them over to make sure that everything is being thoroughly approved.
Makes sense. Yep, due diligence.
Two.
Mm-hmm. Add a squirt, and I squirt you.
That wouldn't be nice, no.
Next are the orders. Any questions on the orders?
We have four of them, I think five of them, Mr. Chairman. Two from the previous fiscal year and three from the current one, including a debit card reimbursement.
Let's see, there's a, well, it says office air compressor. We, I guess we talked about that at our last meeting.
Yes.
What, they put in a new unit and that?
They had to. They did all the diagnostics, and that was not working.
That's what I figured that was. Then there was another one I noticed, 380 bucks for replacing the hedge. Must be out here by the.
The front entrance, the ones that turned brown. And we've been told after the fact that best practice for boxwoods is to wrap them in burlap for the winter so they don't dry out from the winter wind. So we will be doing that going forward.
Hopefully they don't.
I hope so, too.
Choke to death for water in the summer and die again.
I hope so, too, Joe. If anybody else has a green thumb or suggestions on keeping them happy, I'd be happy to hear them.
Or just find something that is winter hardy and salt hardy.
Great.
Also, John, you also need five gallons, at least five gallons of water every week for the rest of the summer.
Okay, yep.
We might need to just find something more low maintenance going in.
Well, certainly if these have any trouble, we'll have an opportunity to replace them.
Give one more shot.
Yes.
Might as well now.
Wait for a moment, you know.
Social distancing.
Social distancing, exactly.
Anything else on the orders?
Was this 20 or 21? The debit card.
Oh, I can tell you that, second. That would have been 21. And by the way, since we don't have another select board meeting, maybe a dog hearing, but not a select board meeting until August 5th, there may be some time-sensitive counts that need to be paid. So we may have to call you a little bit later.
20 or 21?
21.
Commendations report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. First, I'll just point out that town offices saw a return to full office staffing hours here in the building on Monday, July 6th. And the, was an open, there was an opening to the public this past Monday, the 13th. And so far, after three days, I'd say so good, so far so good. Everything seems to be working pretty smoothly, and we're not overrun with hordes of people. So that's very good. On Wednesday, July 8th, a project engineer working with the highway crew dug two test pits near the fire department's mechanic street frontage. The town's work on July 8th, 9th, and 10th is billable against the grant that the Rutland Regional Planning Commission has procured for this stormwater management engineering study. You can see in tonight's packet an email from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission person Barbara Noyes-Pulling noting that this project has been highlighted by the state's Department of Environmental Conservation in their blog with photos. So that was kind of a nice thing to put Pittsburgh on the map. There was a pre-bid site meeting at the transfer station for the Depot Hills Sewer Pump Station Project on Wednesday, July 8th. This event was well-attended. There were at least eight contractors that I counted there. On the other side, the town has been forced to request from V-Trans a one-year delay in project completion deadline of December 31st, 2020, as our structure fabricator hasn't been able to generate either a price nor a guaranteed delivery date for the structure, largely due to COVID-19 disruptions to its normal operations. Seems as though they were starting for business, and then they got overwhelmed by it. And somehow, our request, which was several months back for the structure and a quote, did not get attended to despite some follow-ups. So they've apologized, and they'll be back in touch shortly with the numbers and a delivery scheduled presumably for next spring. As to the salt shed, project engineer, Otter Creek Engineering, Brent Rukowski, have gone out to bid for the construction of the salt shed project. And the town has gone out to bid on our construction inspection services consultant, as is required by V-Trans. With regard to the construction, there will be a pre-bid meeting at the transfer station Monday, July 27th, with bids due on August 7th. The substantial completion quote-unquote deadline for the construction is November 20th. With regard to the construction inspection portion of the project, proposals are due in on July 24th. And the town manager, highway foreman, select board chair Hank Pelkey, and Derek Kennison of V-Trans will sit on a committee to review the proposals, interview applicants, and make hiring recommendation to the full select board. So stay tuned for that. Just a reminder that the town of Chittenden has scheduled a meeting regarding its plans to convert three Class IV roads to trails. And that is going to take place, the meeting on 10 o'clock on Saturday, August 1st, at the intersection of West Road and West Road Extension, with a follow-up, Chittenden's select board meeting to occur Monday, August 10th, at 5:30 at the Chittenden Town Offices. The town manager has sent a letter to Chittenden's Select Board seeking information regarding their plans and its possible effects on the town's access to its water sources up on Mountain Iquack. We typically do use West Street Extension to get up there. And if any of you are interested in attending either or both of those Chittenden Select Board events, feel free to let me know, and perhaps we can arrange for carpoolsing. It's kind of a remote area. The Omea Community Issues Team meeting scheduled for July 30th was canceled due to COVID-19 concerns. In my email exchange with Omea, I did ask whether Omea has any further word on their response to our request to purchase one of their lots off-site on West Creek Road for development as a new Florence Fire Substation. I was informed that plant manager Wayne Wilmonds would give me a call this week to give me an update. So I'll let you know as soon as I hear anything. I mentioned the fact that due to the three-week gap that we're looking at, we may need to call in selectmen to look at orders that are time-sensitive. The town today received a 45-day notice of a proposed 500-kilowatt solar farm to be installed at the intersection of Plains and Pine Woods Roads behind the salvage yard, on the salvage yard six-acre parcel. The town manager has asked for a project representative, lawyer, developer, and/or landowner to attend the next select board meeting of August 5th. And the lawyer representing the landowners and the project will be coming down for an August 5th meeting. They may also take Mark Winslow up on his invitation to attend their next meeting of the Planning Commission, which will be Thursday, August 27th. The police and assessor's office have complained in recent weeks about slow email delivery. So the town manager has discussed the matter with Comcast, which has offered substantial increased, substantially increased speeds and greater bandwidth and a more reliable Internet service. After reviewing Comcast's proposal with our IT consultant, Vermont Digital, we have authorized the upgrade to occur next Wednesday, Wednesday, the 22nd, at 8:00 a.m. Certainly to the extent we look at video conferencing as a future requirement, that'll certainly be helpful. Meanwhile, I've asked Vermont Digital for their thoughts and consultation as to how we can do the best setup here to facilitate video conferencing, what machinery, software, TV monitor, laptop-type combination would work best, and what would be some foolproof information on how to establish and host Zoom meetings, that kind of thing. There will be a staff meeting on Thursday, July 23rd, at 9:00. As always, select board members are invited to attend. V-Trans has delayed review of pending municipal highway and structures grant applications until the state legislature passes a full-year budget. As you know, we had sought money for a box culvert on West Creek Road and for the reconstruction of the southern end of West Creek Road under those two separate programs. And so I imagine that means that they will await the legislature putting to bed a full-year budget before they can commit those funds and make decisions on grants. In tonight's packet, and you may hear this from Butch as well, you will see the state's recently proposed, or recently provided education tax rates. As you know, the town will not be able to generate tax rates and send out property tax bills until grievances have been heard and disposed of by the members of the BCA. And as I gathered from Helen, there are approximately 10 grievances pending. A new, a new update on our rec director, there will be a "Thank You Randy Adams" event held on the evening of Wednesday, July 22, in one week's time at this hour, 6:30 to 7:30, for fans of retiring Recreation Department Director Randy Adams to drive by and offer their thanks to Randy. This, again, will be a drive-through event at the town office building front parking lot, and will give people an opportunity to thank Randy for all that he has done for the town during his 19-year tenure as rec director, with a card, a wave, or just a good word for Randy and his family. Thanks to Lori Hempel, Michelle Adams, Rob Ketchum, and the other members of the rec committee for pulling this event together so quickly. Finally, the summer newsletter, which will take a physical form this time. The deadline for submissions was today, but I'm sure if you had something burning, if you got it to Linda tomorrow, we could still accommodate that. They will be printed and mailed, if only to ask people, as we've discussed, whether they want to continue seeing it printed and mailed and/or limited in some way due to the, due to the branded reporters' suggested community forum page. So that's what I've got, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions upon it, on the other side of the board?
I do have just a last.
That Class IV road up there, Chittenden.
Yep.
Has Chittenden given us any reason or any information as to why they're doing this?
Yeah.
As to who it's going to help or hurt, or?
They haven't said who it's going to help or hurt, but they have said that it's impossible for them to maintain the road to whatever standard they believe that stormwater management now requires of town roads. You know, we're going through this process of prioritizing roads for upgrades, crowning, ditching, culvert, upsizing. And they might have felt that it's easier for them simply to declare these trails than to possibly have any burden to maintain them. And that's how they described these decisions in their letter. And it's in your packet of two weeks ago.
Because I'm a little bit pointed with that area up there. And that road, of course, it serves for our water system.
And our town forest.
And it serves for the removal of timber if and when that happens. But that road also, years ago, was a horse wagon road that went up through, over, and joined the notch road. Not everybody knows that, but as a young lad, I, my dad used to hunt up there, and that's how I, as a kid, I was up in there, and I walked that road. And it was very easy to, to follow. I wonder if it's going to cause any hardship to any property owners. Now, up on the top, you go up on the top, and there's what used to be the old white place, which was the Camden pasture, and those names are long gone. But Vas Ghee or Brad Ghee now lives up in there on some land. And I haven't talked with Brad, but I wonder if he doesn't have access to that same road.
There's been some elbowing between the Gee's and Simeon Brunner, who's a landlord up there. And yes, he's been, he's been notified. The certification list for that notice involved Simeon Brunner, who lives at the top of the hill, the Gee's, and the town as well, because it abuts our property. What access is it?
I'm aware of the neighborly fugitives that are going on up there. And I would hate to think that we might contribute to somebody's benefit when we don't even want or have no intentions of being involved. So that's why I'm asking whether we have received anything from the town of Chittenden Select Board that gives us any direction as to why they're doing this and what benefits they are.
That's, that's the best way I can paraphrase their letter, which was in the packets a couple weeks ago. That was their thinking, that they didn't want the burden of trying to, of keeping it up.
This stormwater ruling has brought on some new regulations that we never had.
Right.
And I can understand maybe Chittenden wanting to get away from some of that, which is not all bad, that's for sure. But I'd hate to think that we are being kind of snowballed by somebody somewhere.
I definitely have written them, asking for explanation about how this would affect people like Pittsburgh using the road to access our water sites. And if I don't get an answer in writing, I'll certainly demand one at this pre-hearing meeting on the site. And if not then, at the select board meeting on August 10th, if we have to go down and get those answers.
That's, you know, just some questions that came from my mind.
I'm on the same, I'm on the same subject, or, I don't want.
No, go ahead, because it's a follow-up to that, that's fine.
Now, do we, let's just say they, they decide to turn this into a trail and let it go. Do we have any, do we have any recourse against that? Is, let me, is that our only access to our water supply?
It is, because our, our, our town forest sits on the very top of the mountain.
Yep.
It had an access originally through someone else's property on the western side. That's gone. And this is the only access we have to the water sources, which happened to be on the east side. We have that forest on both sides of the ridge. And so, yes, this is our only access.
It's our only access to our water supply. So that's a big deal to us.
Of course, of course. We need to get up there and maintain.
So now, if, if they do decide to throw this into a trail, is there any recourse we have?
Well, as you saw, I did inquire of VLCT that said they don't want to get involved in what could be a town versus town thing. But I think we should just gather information about what their plans are in terms of the trail and whether this will have any effect. I don't know that they've ever maintained it as a Class IV. They have no legal obligation to do so. And we've been putting gravel down with Simeon Brunner's help to spread the gravel over these last six or seven years, anyway. And so I don't think, under that scenario, that would be any impact to us. But if there's something more to it, that's why I want to find out about Chittenden.
And what I'm, you know, you're, if we're essentially maintaining the road now, but if they throw it to a trail, will we still be allowed to do that?
Right, right. And those are the things I'm trying to suss out from Chittenden.
John, do we have a legal right-of-way on that road? Do you know? Probably not.
We have all, we have all the land records, and we had kind of a, a one-upsmanship sending of letters and emails back and forth with Simeon Brunner, who thought maybe we didn't have the right. We, we insisted that we did, and we just agreed to not even fight about it. Let's work together on maintaining the road.
Boy, this is something we really want to look at hard and long at right now, because this would affect you forever.
You don't doubt.
Yes, that's why it's on the radar.
If we need an attorney on this, I think we should. That's my thought. I don't know if we're supporting.
Thank you.
I'll go after it. I want to go after it.
Oh, you can.
Oh, well, now, mine's not even half, my question wasn't even half this, like, serious, but I have, just to, going back to the rec, because the, so the rec pond is now open, but swim at your own risk? So a lot of, I've been getting a lot of questions from people, why then there's, like, hours posted? Because I think it's either 10 to 6 or 12 to 6, so people are just wondering.
We've seen that in other towns, limiting access at some point, so that you don't have maybe trouble at the end of the day trying to extract people from it when they close the gate about 8 o'clock.
Okay.
And that's the heat of the day. I figure that's the most need for refreshing activity. It's arbitrary. I all agree to that.
Sorry, yes, yeah.
If I may, I'd like to chime in on the Class IV piece. Because the Board of Civil Authority has some experience with Class IV roads and some property assessment on the old Harbin Road on the backside. And that road was a Class IV road until about 1936, when the town turned it into a town trail. And at that time, we found that if it's a town trail, the property owners either side of the road own the road. If it was, in this case, over here in, in, on the backside, it's the same property owner on both sides of the road. So that person owns both sides of that road, and he can close it at any time.
That's good to know.
What, what, that's, that's, that's what I believe in. I know many of us sat on that decision, and that's what we found out was the legal decision of that.
Of course, there is, there is a doctrine of prescriptive easement.
There is.
So if you have property that becomes landlocked, you do have a legal right to get at it, or the board has the right to insist upon it.
Right, right. And this case over here.
But it's a good idea to lawyer up and reserve.
And that, that was part of the appeal, that the property over there was landlocked. And the board found that it wasn't. But that was part of that appeal, is that, that that property was being, was landlocked.
Right.
So the other access, what happened to that? Was that a private, the landowner took away, took away there?
Melissa Hoffman, you might remember the name. She was doing some kind of alternative ecologically friendly land management on her big parcel, through which we got an easement for one time only to do a logging operation.
Okay.
And ultimately, we tried to get that into a more permanent one, and then she ended up sending, selling out to this same fellow, Simeon Brunner.
Oh, okay.
So a town trail is, sounds good in theory, but it's just very slow.
Yeah, yeah.
And especially our watershed being up there. You want to be darn careful of this one.
Yeah.
Very good.
Anything else? Some board comments? None? Public comment?
Yeah, John?
Yeah, you've got a long list. You have a long list of topics on which you're an expert today.
I have a long list of topics, but we'll leave it at that. John emailed me this afternoon and said you had a room in the, in the, room in the room for another person, so I should come this aft, tonight, because I talk too low on the phone. You can't hear me, and I can't hear you, so, so here I sit. And John referred to the first piece that I'd like to talk about a little bit, beyond the, on the upgrading, the Internet and Internet speed and broadband in the building. The legislature passed a bill, 948, that the governor signed into law a couple of days ago, which authorizes quasi-judicial proceedings to be done through electronic means. Board of Civil Authority, Board of zoning adjustment, that take action regarding people's lives, can now meet electronically. And they, and obviously, that's a suggestion, because as an example, the Pittsburgh BCA could not meet in this room, because there's about 20 people on the BCA if everybody shows up. So this allows the BCA's, and I'll just speak to the BCA, but it allows the BCA to hold a hearing electronically, and we, and nobody has to be in this building. It, as long as we warn it electronically, even, and not, don't even need to post it. All it has to be warned is electronically. And the municipality shall not be required to designate a physical location for the proceeding. So, and then there's other language that talks about inspections and so on and so forth, as to how the BCA can operate electronically during the, during the COVID-19 crisis that we're in now. So to that end, I was getting a little nervous, knowing that we have an election coming up in August 11th, and knowing that we'll be having hearings sometime at the end of July. So I'm saying to myself, we need, I, the Board of Civil Authority, now I'm talking, we have not had a meeting on this yet, so I'm stepping ahead of the board a little bit. But I need to be prepared. I think we need to be prepared. So yesterday, I came over and worked with Liz Willis, and we purchased, the board purchased, they don't know yet, but through our budget, a, a subscription to Zoom for a year. It was $149. That prescription, that subscription to Zoom is, can be used by anybody in the town, because Liz is the administrator. So if this board decides they want to use Zoom, you have an account all set up. And Liz could make John the administrator, or any of you the administrator, or Kelly, anybody the administrator, to help run the meeting. So that account was set up yesterday. And yesterday, we spent, what, John, maybe two hours, two and a half hours, trying to have a meeting between Liz and I in the same room? And we couldn't do it, because there's not enough bandwidth in the building
Yeah, that's true.
to support the project. We did manage to have a short meeting, when we got away from the server and got down into this room, we were able to do a back-and-forth, if only one of us was on video. We could have a meeting. The other one, one could be on video and one not. We could both be on, on audio. So the account's set up. And, and I got out ahead of John, and I, I can't apologize for that, because we have to be prepared sometime after the 20th to start doing property tax, property valuation appeals. So I'm trying to get going on that. I want to have, because we're going to need to, we're going to have to have a training to the members of the BCA, get them set up in their devices at home. An iPad is, is really, really easy to set it up on, very, or any tablet is very, very easy to set it up on, or things like that. You just download a Zoom app, and you're in, you get an invitation to a meeting, and you're on your way. So I did do that as, as a result of this, this bill, knowing that we've. So I did do that as, as a result of this, this bill, knowing that we, we would not be able to have a meeting where we could socially distance ourselves. I don't know what the board's going to decide on how to set the meeting up yet, but we will have to do something. We will not have witnesses in the room with us. They will have to appear electronically. So an appellant will have to make arrangements to appear electronically. Then the appellant will have to also make arrangements to furnish, furnish their documents to us electronically or by mail prior to the hearing. And the same goes for the Lister, or I haven't talked to the assessor yet, but she will have to do the same thing. She'll have to furnish the documents to us and all the big packets we get, either electronically by print and they can be mailed to us or we'll figure out a way to distribute it once the board meets. So it's my intent to, after next Wednesday, probably the following Monday or Tuesday, is to, I'm going to get a letter out tomorrow and then have a meeting of the BCA to decide how we want to handle this, this piece here. So, but the, but the account is, is set up in the name of the town of Pittsburgh. It's, I think it's paid for already. I think she used the, a form of, a debit card. I don't know what she used, but we're all set up and ready to rumble. And you can, you have up to 100 people in the meeting and it can go on for 24 hours, the meeting can, should you decide to meet that long. So. As a planning commission can use, I, you folks that, some folks that are planning commission, Mark had his own, his own account. And it worked, I think it worked pretty well.
Oh, yeah. I've done it with Boy Scouts. It works good.
Sure, it works very well. You've probably got the app set up on your iPad.
Yeah. Rutland Regional Planning's got some other one and it doesn't work well.
No, they're using, they're using the Microsoft Teams.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't work well.
Doesn't work at all.
Legislature used Zoom, but the administration couldn't use Zoom because they couldn't be on the same platform we were on because of separation of, of the branches of government. So, yeah, they use Teams, doesn't work as well. It's more commerce.
Yeah.
Zoom is pretty, Zoom's pretty easy.
Pretty simple.
We can help, I can help, help anybody. You're probably all set up on, so, I mean, if you've got kids at school.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I am thinking though, like as far as like quasi judicial hearings and meetings, like what, what would be, what would be in place for people who don't know how to use this?
Well, that's, we can, we could, they can do a iPhone because Zoom, the Zoom platform has a call-in feature. It gives you a phone number and a meeting ID, just like you have here.
So instead of their picture, it would just be a black screen?
Their picture would be a black screen with a telephone on it. Yeah, so they can testify, not, not with video, but verbally.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's going to be, there's some, there's some logistics that we have to figure out. Possibly, we could have the witness come here and have maybe Helen or clerk or, or somebody meet them here and assist them through the process using a, a device in this room. That's, that's a possibility. I'm, I'm hoping that we'll have maybe two or three members of the board here to, to do the process and accept documents and do all that kind of good stuff. But that's going to be up to the board. We're going to, we'll beat on that as soon as we get the platform set up. Okay, but thank you very much, John, because he had big patients yesterday with us. Yeah, and we were running around here like chicken with their heads cut off trying to figure out what happened. And all of a sudden, John said, you know, I've got an upgrade coming next week, I think. So we went, oh, yeah. Cool, very cool. So that's very timely and thank you, John. The other piece I want to talk to you about that concerns the Board of Civil Authority is, as you know, and there's been a lot of publicity around absentee validating for the election cycles, both the primary and the general election. Many of us got cards in the mail from the Secretary of State that had a return address of Newport Center, Vermont. That was a mistake, obviously. If you did send it to Newport Center, it will come back here. It will come back here electronically from the folks in Newport Center within two or three days after they receive it. It's what Helen told me yesterday. I did talk to the Secretary of State's office when that hit my mailbox and found that Pittsburgh Florence and Eden and East Mountpelier and a few in the Burlington area had the wrong return addresses on them. I don't know if you had it in Brandon, or if yours went back to the Brandon Town Clerk or whatever. Right? And that was, that particular piece was exploratory for the Secretary of State so they could clean up the statewide checklist. So if, they sent a postcard to every single person on a statewide checklist. And I don't know how many that is, but I can guarantee you he'll get at least 15% back that are undeliberate.
Well, I didn't even get mine.
You didn't get one?
I didn't get mine either.
Okay, so if you want.
And I know a lot of people who are deceased though got theirs.
That what?
A lot of people who are deceased received theirs, I've heard.
Yes, yes. So that's, yeah, so that's what they're trying to do is clean up the checklist, so.
So should I reach out, be reaching out to make sure I'm on, you know?
You should, you should, you should ask the town clerk for a absentee ballot for the primary. And at the same time, you can ask for the ballot for the general election.
I mean, I plan on voting in person anyways, but should I still?
There will not be, there does not appear to be any in-person voting.
Oh, I thought there was an option.
No. The primary, there may be in-person voting, but not, we're not sure yet on the general election. So that was in, that leads me into my next problem we have. So anyway, that's the process. If you didn't receive one of those cards, get ahold of your town clerk and request an absentee ballot. I would ask you to request an absentee ballot for the primary and, and a general election vote. The, the bill that was passed, it was a little bit controversial for mail-in balloting. There was some concern about ballot harvesting, but it's been, there was no concern to that because that's been allowed in Vermont for years. The other people picking up your ballot and returning it, that's, that's allowed. It has been for 40, 50 years. The, we are awaiting guidance, Helen's awaiting guidance and so is the BCA, as to the procedures for the general election. And until we get those procedures, we're a little bit on hold as how to move forward with the general election. But it does say, it per, it gives the town clerks a lot of leeway and the secretary a lot of leeway that says, one of the provisions is requiring mail-in balloting by requiring town clerks to send ballots by mail to our registered voters. That'll be done by the Secretary of State in conjunction with the town clerks.
Question, which?
Yes, sir.
We've both got postcards at our house. We both planned on being here to vote, so I didn't do anything with them.
That's fine. But how you vote may, may be different than what you are accustomed to voting at here because of the distancing requirements. In this room, we can only have three or four people at a time voting. So that's, that's a concern that we have. But yes, if you don't want absentee ballot for the primary, you don't have to. There's a provision in this for the general election to prevent drive-up car voting. And that's, several municipalities have tried that so far and they have found that it works very, very well. We're, we're in consultation with a couple of towns that have done that. In consultation with Brandon, they are trying to develop the same thing that, that we're, and here again, the board hasn't ruled, hasn't weighed in on this, but we're trying to get prepared to present something to, to the board, to the BCA for this. It allows the clerk to count ballots as she receives them. Previously, you could never count a ballot, an absentee ballot until the day of the election or the day before the election. Now they can, they're be able to start counting ballots through the machine as they receive them. So anytime from, on the general, I think it's mid to late September when they start voting by absentee. So they'll start counting those ballots. The, but, and, and the big but is we do not yet have the guidance from the Secretary of State. We were expecting it last Friday and it didn't come. They are, and I know the Secretary of State's in a meeting with the Department of Health to come up with some health regulations for, for voting and those, those type of things. So the primary, where everybody's encouraged to vote by mail if you can. And if not, we as a town and, and the Board of Civil Authority will have to devise a procedure that is safe and health, health conscious to, to vote. And it's our, we have brainstormed this for several hours trying to figure out how to use this room in the hallway and people waiting in the parking lot to vote and keeping social distances and asking, you know, people have to wear masks and sanitize and all that. But what we found is that we could only get about four people at a time voting in here. And after everybody uses a voting station, it has to be sanitized. So it would require a couple of folks from the town or from a cleaning company to sanitize the voting booths after everybody has been in a voting booth. So we have made, we, we have to have a check-in spot, pick up your ballot. We traditionally have used a, an exit checklist to, so we can confirm ballots. We don't have to do that in Pittsburgh. We don't have enough voters. So we are, we could do away with that potentially and save some people in a room. But if, if you had four people in here voting at once and we had, what's an average vote on a primary? Seven to 800 people, it would take for like forever to get everybody.
Keep in mind that all the ballot workers here are 70 plus.
Yeah, exactly.
Who might not want to participate, even with all the.
Exactly. That's another problem we have. So that's, we're going to be counting on the BCA to volunteer some time or, you know, you'd be compensated. But members of the BCA, which is all you guys, to, to help us out with that. I can't, I can't be part of that because I'm on the ballot. But we can, I can help with the procedure, but I can't, that can't be anywhere near a ballot. So.
Well, now you said vote, you're voting in a car. That seems to me to be the simplest way to fix this problem.
You are right. You are, we, I agree. And we, we kind of did a scenario yesterday where people could come in the gravel driveway, pick up, get it, we'll have to have, we'll have to have tents. Without, not necessarily heaters for August, but we will definitely.
Well, you'll need a tent for either the sun or for the rain.
Weather.
Yeah.
Go through a.
A tent, get your ballot, get checked off.
Get checked off, move, move to the side of the parking lot, vote.
Yeah.
And then take your ballot to an exit person over here, probably right opposite the door that would collect your ballot.
Helen has the correct notion that, in fact, that's a reversal of our normal traffic flow and so that might cause a cluster.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe we do the whole thing in the.
Well, no, do it the other, because.
We could do it, we could do it either way, whatever works best.
If you've got people, what I'm thinking is if you've got people by this door.
Yeah.
You get your ballot here.
Yeah.
You vote, then you go by this other door and the ballot, and the person can watch you put the ballot in the machine.
Right. Well, the machine doesn't have to be outside. Machine can be, doesn't, doesn't even have to be seen. It can be inside, so.
Yeah, but I think people would feel a lot more comfortable to watch their ballot go in the machine.
If it's inclement weather, we don't want the machine outside. So we can play that way.
Well, a tent.
And I don't disagree. I'm, I'm not, I don't.
Yeah, but I, I think that's.
So that's, that's the kind of thing we're thinking about. The back parking lot would be big enough for several cars to park and vote. We might have a traffic problem out on there, so we'll probably have to hire a police officer to help us with, with, with all that. We're also considering, we're also considering reducing the hours of voting from, we're now at seven to seven. And we were, we were talking about reducing it from 10 to, to 10 to seven, which is the minimum you can have because of ballot clerks being able to have enough people here to staff. We're going to lose half of the ballot clerks that we use. I can just about guarantee you that because of age and health reasons and those type of things.
Now, can members of the BCA do that job?
Members of the BCA.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so, yes.
You'll probably find people to do that.
I hope so. And then, and then we get through all that rigmarole, you still have to count that night. You still have, because you still have to do the write-ins. And as you all know, you have to do all the other stuff that goes along with it, tabulate and so on and so forth. So now we're talking about, yeah, using every room in the building to count.
What, what if you, and I realize we don't own it anymore, which is a, well, what if you could use the town hall? Use the upstairs, I mean, you've got a huge space.
You could probably spread out enough, but we were, we were not welcomed at the town hall. I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Jeez.
That, I'm sorry, that's, that's an issue.
Yeah, yeah, we were not welcomed at the town hall.
That's an issue.
Yeah.
Of course, they weren't letting the rec department use that area either.
Right, right, so.
Well, yeah, but it's, I'm sorry, it's the town hall.
Yeah, I know. But, you know, if we could do it, Dave, Dave, I think we can do it here. It will save. I'd rather pile, I'd rather pile up the cars down Plains Road than pile them up on Route 7.
No, 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 but I'm saying as far as counting, that would give BCA room enough to spread out and do the job.
Sure, sure. But I mean, if you were able to use, and you, probably you'll have to sanitize every space we're in. I, I don't know how you're handling sanitizing in the office and that's.
We've just doubled up what we normally do.
Yeah, so we would be in John's office, Linda's office, the rec director's office, the Lister's office, town clerk's office in it here.
You'll have, you'll have cars with multiple, four, five people in it.
That's right, Joe. That's right.
So that's going to cause a little bit of congestion.
So I think one of the things that we had concerns with, if, we don't know this yet, if you have to.
Is that a secret ballot if you've got multiple voters in the car?
Yes, but if, if, you're right. But if you bring your own, if you have to bring your own ballot, that will save us a lot of work. Because the, if you bring, everybody brings their own ballot when you check in and your name is checked off the checklist, then we don't have to, we don't have to interface with anybody because it'll be, should be voted by the time they get here. We'll just have to collect it on the other side. And then there's a concern about, well, can people vote twice using that system? And the answer to that is, is, is no. Because if you are mailed an absentee ballot, we know that, Helen will know that. So if you, if you, Dave Mills, have an absentee ballot and you've sent it back and she, she checks you off on the checklist.
Mm-hmm.
You come the next time to get a ballot.
You can't get one.
You won't get one. You shouldn't get one.
But you shouldn't get one. All things being equal, only, only alive people should be able to vote once. So, so we think that will work. We're working on it and the board will make a decision. Well, you are all on the board, so we'll certainly consult with, with everybody and, and probably invite the town manager to come in because it's your building and understand the best way to do this. But anything we can do to, to make the process easier for people to vote. The primary, we will try the system out, I think during the primary. The differences in the primary, not everybody will have a ballot. Take like Bob here, you know, they didn't ask for a ballot. So he'll come here and be able to pick up a ballot, go to the parking lot.
Well, I see what you're saying, okay, yeah.
I think, I don't know how many pens, we're going to, they're testing a machine, I think, tomorrow. And Helen is going to try, try the machine using pencil and not felt pen. So that we can buy.
You probably should try with ballpoint pen also.
Ballpoint pen or something, something that we can, something we can give away, you know, those little golf pencils?
Oh.
Something like that, that we can buy, you know, a couple thousand of those, pretty easy. So we don't have to sanitize, don't have to sanitize the pen when it comes back.
Right, but it must because absentee ballots, those are filled out with a bunch, but actually you count, but don't those go through the machine?
They do.
And it counts them?
Yes.
And people fill it out with whatever.
Yes.
So it should work.
Yeah, it should. All things being equal, it should work. They're going to, I think she said they're testing tomorrow, tomorrow or Friday. They're going to test the machine, they're, they're coming down, the service, I think that we have, to do the machines is coming down like maybe tomorrow or Friday to check the machine, to check it for accuracy and up to date and, and all that kind of good stuff and make sure the right people are in there and whatever. So it's going to create some, some pretty big expense for all this stuff. Our, I don't know what the BCA budget is, but it's certainly not big enough to carry this. There is a bill and it has not passed, John, I was mistaken. It has not passed to recoup expenses for towns that have, that have expended funds to accommodate the COVID-19 crisis. Yet last, I checked on it tonight, the bill itself is in Senate appropriations. And it's, and it's got a bunch of millions in it. And I suspect we will take that up when we go back on August 25th so that, because there's, there's two sources of funds. One is FEMA and the other is this, this bill. And I think that's what they're trying to figure out now with Joint Fiscal Office, trying to figure out the best. with joint fiscal office, trying to figure out the best route to take. Do we go with FEMA? Or do we fund it ourselves through our, through our COVID relief fund money? Which we still have twenty, two hundred and forty million dollars left of the two point two five billion that we got, so. We haven't spent that, we will, we'll spend that in August, so one way or another. And today, uh, and this, this will affect you, the other day, the forestry grants are coming out. I think the end of this week, and the dairy, and the dairy and farm grants came out today. Agency of Ag has those. Uh, there's twenty-one million dollars for agriculture. So you may want to take a look at that or others. Anybody else got a bunch of cows and sheep or whatever that they're raising commercial?
I'll sell you some.
So that's my spiel as far as locally, we're, we're still in session in, in Montpelier. We, uh, we did Zoom from March thirteenth until we, uh, left late June every day. And, uh, we, most of our work was centered around COVID-19 and spending two, two point zero one billion dollars on that and getting it hopefully to the right people in Vermont that, that need the funds. The, we did some other, uh, other issues that were lingering. We passed a, a policing bill. It was the, I think the last or next to the last bill that we, we passed that was concerning, uh, police operations, training, uh, and, and those type of things and banning, legally banning chokeholds and knee holds, uh, like were used in, uh, in Chicago. That was not a, that was a, not a, that was not an allowed practice in the police training in Vermont. But now it's been codified, so it's not allowed. That bill's going to have more work done on it when we go back to try to bring, to try to, A, fund people that are, I don't know if your police are using, uh, body cams. I don't know if the Pittsburgh Police Department is using, uh, the body cams or not, but they're going to be required. They're, right now, this bill requires them, just the state police. The next bill will require them all police. But we got to find funding for that whole screen before we pass that forward. And, and, and the legislature will find funding for that bill. There's, there's a big appetite for that. And when we go back, uh, as you, as you probably already know, we did a three-month budget. It is to the end of September, July to September. You know, a quarter-year budget. We will do a, a, uh, three-quarter year budget when we go back. We have to have that done by September thirty or the state will run out of money again. And the hope is that we can use some of the money that we have left over from COVID relief money to backfill the holes in the budget. Right now, our last news that I got, a couple of days ago, we're about three hundred and seventy-eight million dollars short in our FY twenty-one budget. It's a pretty big hole for Vermont to fill. We don't know what the feds are going to do. I, I would be shocked if the feds say, go ahead and use that. Currently, we can't use that money to backfill, uh, the budget holes.
Do you hear anything about negotiations about possible aid to cities and towns and states from Washington?
Nothing from Washington. It'll come from us, uh, either in that, uh, well, the CRF, the COVID relief funding bill or through, through FEMA. FEMA obviously is, is Washington and they, they stepped up early in March with that particular proposal. And I think you've been keeping track of those funds, uh, you know, at the time. As an example, the time that your town employees were laid off, that's, if you pay them.
Plus signage for safety and all kinds of other accommodations.
Little, little, little pennies add up to dollars pretty fast. So, so that's kind of where we are. I, I don't know what else we're going to take, take up when we go back. Uh, I'm hoping not a lot. There's some pretty controversial bills sitting on the wall, uh, up there now that have passed the Senate or sitting in the House. And, uh, I think, my hope is that those bills will be able to take another look at it, another session and not in this session. We're, we're in strange territory now, meeting in August and September. So.
Let's hope that when this thing is, this sickness is all over, we, we can go back to where we were, but I don't know if that's ever going to happen.
I'm, I'm not sure that's ever going to happen, Joe. I, I'm with you.
I know.
I don't know where we're headed for. We're, as an example, we're talking about moving the House of Representatives out of the Capitol Building. So we can meet somewhere. Uh, we can't meet in the House, in the House chamber under current guidelines. We could, we could leave the building and the Senate could meet in the House chamber. It's just about big enough for those thirty members of the Senate. A lot of ideas flowing around. We will know mid-August. We have an architectural firm looking for space for us to go with bigger committee rooms where we can get eleven people in a committee room safely, uh, with a combination of, of electronic meetings and electronic witnesses in a committee sitting in a room like you here. But to get a hundred and fifty members into a, a space is, is problematic.
Their rooms are half as big as this.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, they're, they're talking about.
Smaller than that.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's things being thrown around like us going down to Norwich to the hockey arena to meet. Or maybe UVM or those type of big arenas where we could all get in, get in the arena. So like you said, Joe, it's, it's not going to be the same. So, so I don't know. Yeah, that's really long-term. And from what I saw in the news tonight, I think we should be prepared for pretty long-term stuff.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks for asking. Thank you asking me over. It's nice to see you.
Thanks for the sunshine.
We certainly heard. We understood you and heard you this.
Okay, well, it's glad to hear you do.
Boych, I'm surprised you didn't tell them about the putt I made on eighteen the other day.
Yeah, right. See, the other day I walk up there and I see this old white-haired guy come up. Get out of a cart, grab the putter and walk up on the green. Oh, we have to run it. He wanders up to his bottle, he just stands over it and it's about a thirty-foot putt, Hank.
Yeah.
With a big break in, he just walks up to the, puh, here, hook, wins the match.
Where's your comment tonight, Boych?
Yes. It's on, it's on video.
Okay.
All right, no idea. Assuming no other public comment. Discussion of COVID nineteen, COVID nineteen response, John.
Uh, yes, I really have not much more to add than what I've already said, which is that the town offices are open for business. We just ask people to abide by normal, uh, things like social distancing, face coverings and sanitization, uh, if it, if the issue arises. We appreciate you using the clerk's office by standing outside, knocking on the door. Somebody will get to you because they're dealing with one person at a time. And we'd also appreciate people generally keeping their visits brief and to the point so that the next person can come along. But, um, so far, so good. It's been three days and we haven't had any snacks yet.
Hey, can, we regarding for municipal finances, the same thing?
Yeah, we've already touched upon that as well. Um, again, the education tax rates have just been sent down. Of course, that's a big part of the equation, but we don't know the rest of our equation until the grievances are dealt with. And that means that when we have our discussion about the budget, for example, that'll need to happen probably in August, in these next two meetings in August before the final tax rates are set and tax bills go out. So maybe let's think about August fifth as a serious conversation about whether you want to make adjustments to the budget. Maybe we'll know a little bit more from various sources by then about how the economy and tax receipts are going to be looking.
Discussion of the COPS grant and Procter-Pleasant.
Well, Procter met on July thirteenth and, um, I hadn't heard from them by about noon today. So I got in touch with their town manager who said that they've tasked him with generating a list of select board questions by this Friday. So he has asked that whether he can come by and talk about them with me next week. I'm happy to do it and then I'd be happy to report to the members of the committee as to where they're coming from. But it sounds like he wants to find out where his board sits or what their questions are. We'll do our best to answer them and then, um, if we need to have further broader discussion with the boards, we'll try to figure out some way to do it.
Now, don't we have to, I mean, I realize we don't have to take the grant, but don't we have to acknowledge?
Yes.
Within fifteen days or something?
Forty-five days.
No, it's fifteen, I believe.
I just got an email today saying.
Oh, it's forty-five?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, um, so that puts us also into kind of mid-August when we were notified. So the window is not going to be open forever. There is a process, as I understand, the most recent COPS email to seek an extension of time to commit. So that's another option. But I think we've kicked this can down the road quite a bit. We pry out a Fisher-Kate beat on it.
Yeah. He was doing it all.
Right. I'm trying to find that, um, email, but yeah, here it is. Um, as a reminder, a signed copy of the award must be returned to the COPS office within forty-five days of the official award congratulatory notification.
So when was that?
We got that right before the June first meeting, so late, July first meeting, because I mentioned it at the last meeting. So that would have been late June. I'll, I'll get a date from Mike specifically so we can figure out exactly where to, what date in August to circle the calendar. So we can either, again, answer by then or ask for more time by then.
Village sidewalk, meeting alternative.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Since our last meeting, we gathered some additional information about what's possible and what is not. Having seen a, uh, a single bid from our request for bids on this village sidewalk project. As I mentioned in my memo, um, the sole bidder says he cannot make use of our stockpile of granite curbing, which might have been a cost savings to the town. However, he said if we were able to persuade V-Trans to reduce the scope at the southern end of the terminus around that guard rail, the approach to the guard rail where there is some difference between the road and the sidewalk and elevation, that would amount to a savings of eleven thousand five hundred dollars. Now, again, um, the state, upon my inquiry, had said we can in fact be our own general contractor if we wish to go that route as a, as a cost-saving measure. I've talked about it with Chad. He's willing to give it a try, but, um, both he and the highway crew lack experience and expertise in sidewalk and curb installation. I certainly like the idea of the cost savings that we might see by doing it that way, uh, but there are some reasons for caution. First, again, the highway crew has no experience in this area apart from putting down an asphalt sidewalk and curb for a few feet at the top of Arch Street more than a dozen years ago. And again, it would, it's unknown whether we'd be able to do a job to V-Trans standards. Second, um, there can be no guarantees about the ultimate cost of the project, even if we did it in-house because we have not yet priced out the needed concrete curbing, asphalt, catch basin risers or safety flaggers that would be needed on a busy road like Route seven. Perhaps we could ask our engineer to give us cost estimates for these areas if you'd like to investigate that option. In the past, I will remind you that some selectmen have argued against the highway crew during anything, doing anything more than road maintenance and thereby competing with contractors.
Putting down an asphalt curb and putting down pre-cast concrete curbs are two entirely different animals. If you have no experience in them, the job will never be acceptable to the state, guaranteed. Or, or if you get it to be acceptable and takes so long, then it won't be the cost.
Right.
Many costs in the left.
That's why I say there seems to be three real options. Either A, rebid the project, B, try to have the highway crew do it, or C, decline the grant, which could pretty much easily be done, I think, on the grounds that, hey, this is the COVID era. We've got a higher price than we were expecting and we're all about maybe cutting the budget. And this is no longer as critical given our taxpayers' burdens these days.
I may not be going to school there either. But I, I think, we have a fourth option too, I think.
Please.
And that is just resurface that sidewalk.
Yep.
I mean, I don't see, I mean, everybody keeps saying that an asphalt curb won't hold up. But on the south end of that, there's an asphalt curb that's been there since.
Ever.
Forever. And, and yeah, so what if a snowplow chips it a little bit? So I, I think that we should get hold of, you know, paving contractors and just, because I.
God, I hate this thing.
From what I remember from a year ago, it's only like twenty or thirty dollars a linear foot to repave that. Which, you know, we got thirty grand in the account to do it anyway. If we can get it done for that, I think it's worth looking into.
First thing we'd have to do is talk to V-Trans, because again, it's their sidewalk and their right of way.
Well, it's our sidewalk in their right of way.
It's their right of way. I will. So I will certainly propose that we're thinking about those lines, see if he's agreeable to doing that. Then we can talk to Tim Rice at WILP, uh, once again, to renew his quote to us and tell him that's maybe the direction we want to go.
John, I went by there today and I was just having a look at that and there are signs about that far off, the edge of the sidewalk on the lawns. If we can move those signs to the, right to the edge of the sidewalk, that would, that might keep people going down there because you know, there's actually two or three feet that you can drive your car on the sidewalk.
Mailboxes as well.
Well, if you move, if you move the signs and the mailboxes between seven and the sidewalk.
I know.
Well, if you move.
But even moving them to the edge, well, as long as they're high enough, because, well, the day Alicia and I measured that, those mailboxes, you almost have to walk around them, which is dangerous because you're walking down the sidewalk and then you gotta move towards traffic. But, you know, as long as like those signs, moving them over, it keeps people.
There's also a postal issue then.
That would go with the screw.
Well, that's a whole nother, yeah.
No matter what you do with it all.
Oh, there's something, but if you, you know.
Well, let's start with V-Trans, ask about if that's a viable option and if so, I can get pricing and we can talk about it on August fifth.
And if they say, oh, no, you can't have an asphalt, then say, well, then how's this one lasted that long?
They've got a commercial where, I know probably all of you may have seen it, where this gal is going on with a set of clippers cutting down flower hanging pots because they're out of.
Yes.
They're too high or too low and she cuts off a mailbox.
Motors Association.
Three inches out of spec.
Okay, so you gotta look at some of those things.
I definitely will.
And what, so what is the cost to re, put also to put it out to, for rebid?
That's only the cost of advertising it again. I, I don't know what played a, a role in the low turnout because we did reach out to everybody. Maybe, um, the, the project itself has had some controversy associated with it to the point that maybe contractors that were local don't want any piece of it. I don't know.
Well, then one of them, it was time, right? Because we wanted it.
Yes.
Preferably by the beginning of school and they said there was no way they could do that. And at this point, now you're into pretty near August.
But I did point out to them that that wouldn't be a deal breaker for us.
Yeah.
Still.
Still, yeah.
So the cost of rebid, let's try it.
Well, the, the question though is whether V-Trans will allow it. If they'll allow it, then I see no problem going out to bid, but let's get the pricing first and we can authorize.
Well, and then ask them about just the paving it too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I mean, we may be better off just to.
That'd be better than nothing.
Well, it'll be better than nothing and it'll, in the end, maybe save us some money. Because the worst part is it's all going to be torn up. Well, it'll probably be twenty years, but it's still all going to be torn up sometime.
Yep, I agree.
Well, uh, you're, you're laughing, but.
Just ask Hank. It's only been fifty so far.
It's only been fifty.
I think you're optimistic.
Yeah, probably.
I had red hair and a beard this long when I started.
And we're on the fast track.
We're on the fast track. All right, new business. If you're the president of listing taxing utilities in the town report.
Yeah, I think you've seen the competing letters we've gotten from the Blanchards on the one side and Helen McKinley on the other. The situation was that this particular taxpayer, um, had sold the property and had an understanding that the buyer was going to pay their share of the taxes due by a certain deadline. Deaths in the family and infirmity in the buyer's family prevented that payment from happening, so there is a delinquency. And normally, when there's a tax delinquency, that person's name, the owner of record as of April first goes into the town report, um, as a delinquent. And as my, um, input points out, uh, that has had a good deterrent effect on people who are concerned about seeing their name associated with delinquencies in the town report. So understandably, the, um, sellers who thought they were free of their obligations on this property are now upset when they've learned from. property are now upset when they've learned from Helen that their names would normally be published in the town report and they've written a letter expressing their great displeasure at that and the unfairness they seem to see in that. Helen, of course, has responded that this is the way it's been done for everybody's memory, certainly more than the 12 or 15 years Linda and I have been here. And the question for you is whether you'd like to make any sort of change in the town's approach to publishing names of delinquents in the town report, whether to do a better job of clarifying the situation for people who have sold after this April 1st deadline or in some other way satisfying these sellers who agreeably did nothing wrong other than failing to see that their sell, that their buyers paid off the remaining taxes.
I know, I'm confused why their name is still attached to it when they don't own it.
Well, their name shouldn't be attached to it, they don't own it.
It's because you published the name according to Helen as of April 1st.
Yeah, but wasn't this going on last year?
Yeah, but this is, they sold it a year ago.
No, no, this is April 1st of 2019. Whoever owned the property at that date has the tax delinquency associated with them. That's a kind of a law day that people use as the record ownership day within the year. This transfer happened later in the year.
I'd like to remind the board that we have had several occasions since I've been in my tenure here, we've had people ask us to leave things out of the town report and make changes to, and we've also on another occasion offered to put just the figures in and leave the reports out to save pretty money. Every time, we left it up to the voters at town meeting and we got so many, so many taxpayers for doing that. Before you make any, before you make any changes to this, I think it should be left up to the voters at town meeting to make that decision. It's their town report.
I get that, I just, I think it is, it is really just not okay that people who don't even owe the money are going to get called out in the town report.
Because now Blanchards have paid the taxes up to the point of when they sold it, correct?
Right.
Can it be noted?
That's, that's what, that's what we have in mind, Linda has...
That's what I would do rather than...
I don't know, I guess I, I guess if I sell you a chunk of property and our agreement is that I'm going to pay the taxes up to that day and I do it and the property is now yours, that's your tax liability.
At the top of the list, you'll see that property listing and you'll see how Linda has put together a little parenthetical pointing out the true fact that...
Yeah, but is anyone going to understand?
The Rogerses were associated with it, so maybe that implies that there's more to the story somehow. I mean, without writing a couple of sentences, you can't really unscramble it for everybody.
I just don't understand why we can't just put that second name in, really just, you know?
Certainly John Rogers will not be complaining about it because he just passed away, unfortunately.
I don't think it's right for us to change policy that's been in effect for many, many years just to accommodate one person. And we're setting a precedent for other people to take advantage of this if we do.
Helen makes the point that the sellers were aware of the buyer's obligation to follow through on their promise to pay those taxes down by June 30th and they were interacting with Helen frequently and learning that it hadn't happened, it hadn't happened. So you could argue that they could have followed up a little bit more strenuously, but that's Helen's position about it.
If somebody's better than us, now if you knew, not the town's fault.
I don't know, it just doesn't seem...
But again, but, but, yeah, they don't know, I mean, they don't own the property.
Right, it's not their debt.
Not their debt.
According to law, they own the property as of the time the taxes were done. That's the point you go from.
Now, one option that Helen pointed out was that, hey, we're dealing with COVID-19, everyone's in economic hardship, maybe the town takes a couple of years off on reporting delinquencies because there might be quite a lot of them.
Very well.
There wasn't in this list, there wasn't in this list, which was compiled as of June 30th, in the future.
And again, I'm making that thing real good.
Look forward to that decision.
What about also being, so having this debt settled by the person who actually owes it, and I do understand that they're no longer here, how does that work legally? Is their name attached to it, to the estate?
Yes.
So the, the fact is unpaid? They haven't been paid yet?
I don't know, I don't know. I think that probably things are in such a turmoil at that house, who lost the mother, a son, and then the father in a few months, probably it hasn't been paid. Not that it won't be, but it hasn't been yet.
There used to be a saying that there was two things that were unescapable and that was death and taxes.
Death and taxes. He escaped them both. Well, he didn't escape one, but he escaped the other.
I'm sorry, but I think that rule's still a poise.
Well, you know, what we could do is if you wanted to put an item on the, on the ballot for town meeting, that would give, that would give these sellers an opportunity to clear their name, so to speak, if they wanted to do so.
Well, I think we've done that in the past, John, these other issues I mentioned. We had, we had an actual article born to do that. And you're right, if we had that article on there at town meeting, they get up and get up there, make their case.
Just since we're talking about it too, I always think it's funny too, and there's a couple on here that are, you know, 50, 60 bucks, and sometimes I've seen where it's been like three cents and we're calling people, I'm like, what is the...
To be the devil's advocate and the guy wearing the black hat, I will say that it's amazing how many people come in and pay their taxes for purely the fear of not having their names exposed to their neighbors.
I'm not discounting that, I'm just saying there's obviously also a couple glitches in this system as well, I mean...
So you may want to check with the listers before you do anything on that because with the Board of Civil Authority, we, operating as the Board of Tax Abatement, we, we use that date, April 1st, as the owner of record of April 1st. And we just had an appeal for that and we found that, as it ended up, the person that's, taxes were paid on April, on March 31st, 30th, 31st, can't ever remember. But the new owner didn't want to pay the taxes from April to June. Well, that didn't apply to that particular appeal because the appeal was based on an April 1 date, which the listers use, I believe, as the, and John, John mentioned it, the owner of record. So the, that is a pretty slippery slope to go down, to move away from April 1st. And I, I'm not sure if that's a statutory requirement and it may be, or it may be a rule in the lister's handbook.
But that, the law as to what's an effective legal date is one thing, right? The policy the town has as to whose name we publish in the town report...
That's, that's your, that's your feeling as far as fooling around with that date, I think that's a pretty slippery slope.
They should have been paid on that date.
Well, I think from what I understand, Blanchard's paid their debt up to the day that they didn't own the property. And once you don't own the property, I, it, I guess boggles me how you can owe taxes on property that you don't own anymore.
Dave, I can tell you that the law has been bothering a lot of people for a lot of years. And we're not immune with, well, with all of us too, but one of the factors you have to live with.
I think certainly if we were to highlight the issue, that gives them maybe once or two chances to say how crazy the town's approach is and how they're innocent of anything smelling bad. That's something to talk...
We got time to talk about this in the future anyways.
We do, we do.
Until we publish the coming report.
Till January.
Yeah, we did pass a law that lets you fool around with due dates on taxes.
Which, which is going to be on the list in August of either budget cutting or tax date or both, or waiver of penalties and interest or whatever. You'll have a lunch, you'll have a kind of an à la carte menu to choose from.
Now, a little, how much does our tax rate, our school tax rate, how, how much is that up from last year for the town?
Helen gave a little analysis, it's not much with the tax rates in tonight's material toward the front of the packet. She has a little listing on the right margin of the second page. It looks like 18, one hundredths of a cent. In other words, it goes, yeah, 1.413 to 1.431.
Okay, two or three cents, all right.
Yeah. Are you suggesting that there might be a change to the education tax rates?
Not yet.
Okay.
You have to remember the legislature's...
Right, that's always dangerous.
Yeah.
So maybe for now, I'll notify these sellers that the select board takes seriously their concerns. We're looking at options, including letting the voters have another opportunity to change town policy about publication of names, something like that.
Well, we need, need, somehow it needs to be owner, in, and I get your April 1 and yeah, there's got to be a cutoff date and whatever, but for our town report, I think it needs to be, you know, owner of record as of the day the taxes are due.
Yeah, I don't know why it wouldn't be June 30th, maybe...
Well, or, or November 10th when the taxes are due. Whoever owes the taxes on November 10th, if you don't pay them, you go on the list.
June 30th is the end of the fiscal year and that's an important date as well, so it could be anything really. Helen, the last felt that it's always been April 1st and maybe that's another thing.
Well, no, and that, but in, like I say, for the listers and whatever.
Right.
But I mean, if you sell, you sell your house on October 1st, you pay your taxes, your deal is you pay the taxes up to that point. Somebody else pays that last month and 10 days worth of taxes and they're the ones who didn't pay, that's the name that should be in the town report.
Usually there are lawyers involved and they prorate all this and take care of that at closing.
Well, it, well, it was, I think, because that's why Blanchard's paid, paid. So it was, it, so again, it, it shouldn't be their name.
But I won't say it was surprise because as I say, apparently they've been lobbying Helen about this and inquiring frequently, so they knew that they had some exposure to the town report if things didn't fall into place and, which didn't fall into place.
Well, the guy died.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, we're going over the same stuff again.
Yeah.
Let's move on. You have a highway permit from...
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Robert and Marcy Laflamme on West Creek Road have a highway access they'd like to cut in and the highway foreman, Chad Ujere, has looked it over and given it his thumbs up. There's a little overhead photo with a marking as to where the driveway would be. I think the only restriction is the usual one, slope it away from, so the water doesn't run into the road.
Now, where, I can't figure out exactly where this is.
I think it's just north of the Depot Hill Road intersection.
Before you get to the...
Post office, before you get to the post office.
Two places before the post office.
Okay, all right.
I'd make the motion to accept that. It's not going to be their department's recommendations.
Further discussion? On the bench, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Approved. Next is, I mean, the date for a penalty for a dog.
Right, we have delayed the, I believe, April 1st deadline twice now, or the select board has, to account for COVID-19 concerns. We only have about 300 dogs licensed this year, which is significantly down from our usual, I'm told. But Helen and I talked about it and I think she agrees with me that kicking or extending the deadline further probably doesn't make as much sense as simply waiving penalties and encouraging people to continue to register their dogs as soon as they are able to. And if that was agreeable, we could do that as with a select board vote on it.
It's been tougher people to do that.
Is there, when we get in? Would it be a penalty or just...
There would be a penalty if people tried to register after a, after a set deadline, but if you simply agree that you're going to waive the penalties, we can continue to encourage people to come in without setting further deadlines that are be ignored like that.
I'd make a motion to waive the penalties this year.
Second.
Further discussion? On the bench, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Your wish. Next is a dog hearing, my favorite subject.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We received a letter Monday from the owner, I'm sorry, from the victim's son, the victim's son of a dog bite here at the Outer Valley Bank or the Bank of, the Bar Harbor Bank and Trust Building, asking for a dog hearing. And by the ordinance, we need to conduct one within seven days. As you all know, we've, we've preferred to do these at the same night as a select board meeting, which would normally be August 5th, which is coming close to three weeks delay between the letter and the hearing. I've talked to both the plaintiff and the respondent. They both understand that normally we would hold it on August 5th. However, both have offered, they haven't demanded it, but both have offered to have the hearing sooner. So if you wanted to just make sure that everything is done absolutely properly, the last day to do it, the seven day limit, would be Monday, July 20th. And if you're agreeable to doing that instead of August 5th, that's fine, I can set that up.
Yeah, I think we should go.
Be a special meeting, right?
It would, it would, because it wouldn't be a select board meeting with them.
Monday.
Monday, the 20th?
Just coming Monday.
Kind of too bad we couldn't work it into...
It is too bad, but that's a long time to wait, especially if there's been a vicious dog attack.
Yeah, and the dog crossed Route 7 to bite them, right? So it isn't like the dog was near, even near the property, so, yeah.
At 6:30, Joe?
You can do it every time you want.
6:30, that's the time we're used to.
Monday, the 20th?
Yeah. Okay. I will let both parties know tomorrow. I think they'll both be pleased with that, get this over with.
And yes, I can do that.
Oh, good, thank you.
That's the 20th of...
You might be off the hook, Joe. There's a family relation, I believe. Richard Gangania.
If it is, I don't know about it.
No, it doesn't count if you don't know.
I will invite you to the hearing, Joe, and you can decide for yourself.
I said 8 on that.
That's Monday, the 20th.
20th.
At 6:30. And that's all we have for open session.
Can I just, one, one thing, just a, just a comment? I noticed that TD Bank, we went from like 1.46% to 0.025%. Would it be worth your while, John, to shop around and see if maybe we could do a little better on that money somewhere else?
The reason we ended up with that was TD Bank was because Helen did a lot of researching and talked to lots of banks and they were the ones who were promising better service and maybe better rates. And so she just established that relationship with them. We could certainly ask for her thoughts on, on this development.
Going from $1,600 to $300 a month is...
No, I agree.
I think due diligence as we look around.
Sure.
It would also be nice with a bank that's in the US. Just saying.
I will pass that on.
That's the end of the...
I'm done, yeah, I'm done. Hey, if I didn't make some comment, you'd think there was something wrong with me.